The only ones we're missing is Bill Soda, and he might join us later, and Chris Wolf. So, this meeting will come to order. This is Zoning Board of Appeals July meeting. Okay, so I have something to read to you here about this meeting this evening. "In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and the Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford website. During this meeting, if members of the Zoning Board of Appeals would like to speak, please utilize the unmute featured Zoom button and wait to be recognized. All participants will be muted during the meeting unless recognized by the Chair. After being recognized to speak, please state your name, and for members of the public, your address prior to making a statement." Okay, so let us begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe Mr. Griffith is going to handle that right now with the flag. "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice." Thank you. All right. We'll have a roll call, please. Meg, do you want to...
Sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Frante, here. Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
Mr. Tezola?
Here.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Dubois. And Ms. Valakat has asked to be excused. As the Chair said, Mr. Soda may appear later.
No, I'm here now, Meg.
Oh, you are? Okay, hi, Bill. Is Chris Wolf here?
No, I haven't seen him.
All right, thank you.
All right, so for our... Also, President is Joseph Griffith, the Land Use Director, he's here this evening, and Stephen Harris, our zoning officer, Meg Green, our recording secretary. All right, so the five members that we have right now, Sarah, Gary, Eton, and Michael and myself, we will be hearing item number two. Just for the record here, item number one, 40 Lawrence Avenue is... They've asked to be moved up into August. So we're going to start with item number two. The commissioners that I have mentioned will be voting on that particular application. So, Sarah, please read in item number two.
Item number two, 17 Maddox Avenue and 20 Scott Street, MVP 27/451/11R5, Kevin Crusade and Esquire for Ishanand owner, very 3.1.4 side yard setback on the northwesterly property line to 7.5 feet or 10 feet required.
Mr. Crusade.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. This is a application that followed a denial without prejudice last month for... We were, at that time, we were asking for a five-yard foot, excuse me, five-foot side yard setback. One of the members of the Commission, I think it was Ms. Valakat, had asked if we could go back and revise the plans and reduce the request that we were making. There was some neighbor opposition on the other side of the House, not on the side of the House where the setback issue would be, or where we're asking for the variance. So I spoke with Mr. Anand, he went back, and with the architect, Mr. Miller, redesigned and actually reduced the request by 50% or two and a half feet, which I thought was a significant reduction based on the, you know, size of the lot and the fact that they, you know, they lost, you know, some decent amount of square footage for that. Also, to point out, we, as part of that, the previous application had four under-the-structure parking spaces. This one now has three because the house became too narrow to fit four cars. So it's only going to fit three cars under and then three cars in front. So we still have more than enough for a two-family residence. The question of whether it's a two-family residence or not is not part of this application. That decision has been made by DPLU and Mr. Harris and Mr. Griffith. That was discussed at length by the Opposition's attorney last month that there was some issue with the two-family residence. That's not the case. We're only asking for a side yard setback variance here. I have listed hardships in a memo that I provided. There are several legal hardships that exist with this site. It's the odd shape of the lot, the fact that there's, it fronts on two different, or almost fronts on two different streets, Maddox Avenue and Scott Street. It's the size of the lot, it's undersized, it's narrow up front, only 30 feet wide on the Maddox Avenue side, which is where this structure, both entrances, would be on the Maddox Avenue side. Mr. Anand had demolished the previous old two existing single-family structures, and he's combining them into one structure, which is acceptable under state law and the locals, and the local zoning regulations. So in addition to that, there are... Connecticut case law has established that if you are reducing nonconformities, that can also be considered grounds for a, you know, granting a variance. So the nonconformities that we're reducing, I listed them in the memo, there's several, right? Previously, there was no off-street parking for any of the houses. The existing house, especially on Maddox Avenue, the pre-existing house, was only, I think, 3.3 feet or three and a half feet from the property line. So that's actually being straightened out to seven and a half feet. So that's a reduction. Same thing with the back of the property, I'm calling it back-street side of the property. The previous house was very close to the property line. That's been since removed, but the new house is not, is only, is going to be five feet from the property line, which is allowed by the zoning regulations. So we think this is the absolute minimal variance that's required, or that we can, that's required in order to build a structure there. The... I don't think that there's anything else to add to it. Like I said, there's several hardships, and I felt that the board was probably ready to act last month, but I think that there was one or two commissioners that had a couple of concerns about the five feet and asked us to reduce it, which Mr. Anand willingly did and did so immediately. And I'm available for questions from the Commission.
Okay, can we take down this application, please, so we can see the people? Okay. Is there anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? Some of us, like Mr. Crusade, had said, "Do we are familiar with this application from last month?" So is there anyone, anyone else in favor, speaking? Is there anyone here opposed? If you're opposed, Mr. Case? Who else? Who else just said something? I'm sorry.
I'm also opposed.
Okay.
Maddox.
All right, we'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm not an attorney. I don't understand the terminology that's been...
We need your name and the address, please.
Sorry, Ev Picarazzi, 15 Maddox Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't understand the terminology that's thrown around, the words hardship, although I can respect them. But if you're buying something, you already know what it looks like and what the lot looks like and what was there and what you could possibly put up, which I hope something goes up sooner rather than later. In this case, I have been emailing... A lot of the emails bounced back. I had the wrong ones. Then I finally found an email of a Mr. Harris and a Meg Green. I simply wanted, I was asking, I understand that they're asking for these setbacks, which are, you know, pretty close. Again, this is, I understand the neighborhood down here with regards to something like that. But you want these setbacks for a two-family house in a one... It seems to me, again, I'm new to the neighborhood, I've only been here a year and a half. It seems like most, if not all, of the houses are one family. And if anybody from the board has been down here, the proposed structure, and I can appreciate that he went back to his architect and brought it in a little, is like a hotel. It will look like a hotel down here. It, I just feel like it's just not going to fit into this neighborhood. And I'm going to backpedal a little, a little. The reason why I sent the email was, I wanted to know when this was zoned for a house like this, who ruled on it, and when all this happened. Like, how was the house structure itself allowed before the variances came in? Again, not good in the terminology. I hope you understand what I'm asking. Like, who approved this house? Like, I saw no information on this, I saw no zoning meetings on this. Like, who would approve a two-family house on a one-family street? And I bought down here for that reason. I came down here a year and a half ago, they're all one-family homes. I wasn't anticipating there ever to be a two-family home here because I saw those two structures that were on the property next door to me. And now, all of a sudden, a hotel is going up, and I'm just a bit confused as to when this was approved. If somebody can answer that for me.
Well, I can answer a few things for you. It hasn't been approved yet, and there was a meeting last month, so you did miss out on a lot of information.
I was...
So, if you'll let me finish saying what I'm saying. Kevin Crusade will address any of your concerns after we get through all of the people that might be against this.
Okay, I was on the meeting last month.
Okay.
And I still don't know when the actual physical home was approved.
When the what was approved?
The plans for the new home that is going up. I understand we're here for the variances, but when was the home approved for a two-family home?
Well, it hasn't been, well, the City of Milford had given them, said that they can build that particular house there because there was two houses there. And again, I'm not going to speak for the attorney, he'll finish this, but we're asking for one variance, and you keep saying variances, so it's one variance.
Okay.
Okay, so are you, anything else, please?
No, I just want an answer as to when it was approved and who approved it and why wasn't I contacted?
It hasn't, it hasn't been approved yet. That's what we're doing right now. That's why we're sitting here discussing this right now. It hasn't been approved yet.
No, the variance hasn't been approved, but that's why I didn't want to waste your time. I've been emailing, what about the house itself?
Okay, hold on, hold on. Mr. Harris, would you please address this comment to this lady, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of things wrapped up in your concerns. One is the use of the lot. So the use of the lot is illegal to family. The form of the building is kind of irrelevant to the use. This application is asking for a variance to construct a new building. So nothing has been approved yet. It's still, you know, that's what this hearing is all about. But the use of a lot as a two-family, there is no question about, because it's illegal to family.
Even though there were two homes up to it prior to this? Like, it wouldn't be like two single-family homes, one... You understand, again, I'm trying to follow.
Mr. Chairman, tonight...
You know, we're not lawyers here.
Eton, Eton, hold on.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Crusade, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, to give it a little bit more background, and I know the the neighbor speaking was present at the last meeting as well, and I know it's maybe slightly confusing. The use, as a two-family use, is a pre-existing non-conforming use. So those structures existed on that lot prior to zoning changing to a, either coming into place at all or changing to a single-family use. Well, that's why there's a two-family use. The structure itself is what we're asking to be approved tonight with this one single variance that we've reduced by 50% since the last meeting. So the, it's a legal pre-existing non-conforming use, which has been ruled on by the Department of Permitting and Land Use, that those, that a pre-existing two-family use, you don't abandon that use or lose that use if you remove the structures, and that's backed up by the Connecticut general statutes as well. So the use is a two-family, and you can combine it into, you could do, you can combine it into two two-family use into one structure. It's the use versus the structure, I think, is where the question is coming up. So so as of right, it's a two-family use on that lot, whether it's, you know, two separate structures or whether it's a, you know, a single structure. Part of the issue is, is that there is a title issue on the back of the lot that doesn't impact my client's property, but it impacts the property between where his ends and where Scott Street begins. So there's a gap in title, and, you know, my client had brought a quiet title action. Previously, the City of Milford agreed that, you know, to quitclaim that property over, the State of Connecticut agreed that they didn't have any interest in that property. But one of the neighbors, I believe Mr. McLeod, you know, disagreed and said, "Well, you know, I might have some kind of claim to that property, or I'm not going to sign a quitclaim deed to that property." So it's not, we can't, we don't have any actual frontage on the Scott Street side when the survey was done and the title search was done and the quiet title action was brought. So that's what drove this structure being proposed now. So I think the original plan was to have two separate structures, as was previously brought up. But this is all that we can, this is all that we can build, is the, because we only have frontage on the Maddox side. We only have legal frontage on the Maddox side. That's why the structure is being proposed as is.
Thank you, Mr. Crusade. Mr. Eton, would you please mute your earphone, please? Thank you. All right, Mr. Case, you would be up next. Yeah, unmute your mic. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight. I'm Attorney Max Case. My office is at 185 Plains Road here in Milford. I'm here representing Robert McLeod, who's the owner of 16 Scott Street, which is contiguous on the southerly boundary with the applicant's property. So, Mr. Chairman, first I need to call to your attention the legal notice. Legal notice provides that Ish Anand is the owner. However, the notarized application states that Sashin Anand is the owner. And he was the one who signed the application. His signature was notarized, and that was what was submitted. According to the assessor's website, this property is owned by Ish Anand, who resides in Orange, and he purchased the property on July 11, 2019. So there's no showing that Sashin Anand is the owner and that he was authorized to file this application. And if that's correct, then this application is fatally defective, and it shouldn't even be considered by your board this evening.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I have other things to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
That's okay. So respectfully, Mr. Chairman, we disagree with the proposition that has been advanced by Mr. Griffin in his April 22 email, and which is heavily relied upon this evening. The fact of the matter is that this is a one-family zone. It's a one-family residential district where only one single-family detached dwelling is permitted. In this instance, not only were there two structures originally situated on the property that were non-conforming because they were built prior to the zoning laws being, coming into play here in Milford, but we have a non-conforming structure. It can't meet the zoning requirements, and we have non-conforming uses because only one single-family detached dwelling was permitted, and there were two on the, two single-family dwellings on the lot. Now this applicant proposes one structure where two living units are attached. That's not the same as two separate single-family dwellings that were not attached. And that's what is not assumed as appropriate by our zoning regulations. So I would submit to you that this application does involve a non-conforming use, two dwelling units where only one is permitted. And you should be mindful, the board should be mindful of the restrictions against enlargement of non-conforming uses, as is set forth in our zoning regulations in 6.2.1. A requirement against, and also you should be cognizant of requirements of 6.2.2, which clearly state that a non-conforming use should not be moved. And that's exactly what's taking place here. And with respect to the structure, 6.3.1, same principles apply. It should not be enlarged. Now, I'm going to tell you, my client will reserve the right to further dispute the Department of Public and Land Use policy that was articulated in Mr. Griffin's April 22, 2020 email pursuant to the administrative remedies that are available to him should you grant the applicant's request this evening. Now, with respect to the issue of abandonment, and I apologize to the board, I know we spoke about this the last time, but we need to do this to make a record. We've previously submitted evidence that Ish Anand intended to abandon the non-conforming use. We are again putting into record the demolition permit to the city historian. We're again putting into the record the demolition permit issued by the City of Milford. And we are again putting into the record the debate by the State House and the State Senate when they considered Public Act 17-39, which is the basis of Public Act, which is the basis of General Statute 8-2, which Mr. Crusade has provided you with. I'd like you to take due notice of Mr. Anand's intent. It was not to rebuild two structures. His plan now shows just one structure with two separate living spaces. So we submit that the non-conforming use of a single-family dwelling on one piece in our five zone, one, a one-family residential zone, were lost because the facts and evidence show that Mr. Anand clearly intended to abandon. And as I said to you last, in June, and I have to say it again, abandonment is an important issue. Last time, I submitted to you the Office of Legislative Research report regarding non-conforming uses and the prohibition on expansion. And we submit that to you again this evening because this application shows a substantial increase in living space, substantial increase in height, and an increase in coverage. Now, the applicant suggests that this application will not affect the property owner to the south. But I believe that's misleading. There is, we agree that there's a variance from 10 feet to seven and a half feet that some of the neighbors are concerned with. But they also object to the variance, if it's granted, as is described by the applicant in his CAM report, to build a dwelling unit, a two-family dwelling unit on the lot. And that's what the concern's about. So Mr. Crusade has indicated in his memo to you that the house is being constructed for the applicant's immediate family and his parents. And with all due respect to Mr. Crusade, that's an irrelevant concern. Mr. Anand's claim that he's doing it for his family or for himself is irrelevant. I told you back in June, and I have to tell you again, that variances run with the land. They exist in perpetuity. They're not intended to fit in individual circumstances. Whatever you do tonight is going to exist in perpetuity. Mr. Crusade also notes that there were other variances that were granted on Maddox Street and on Scott Street. And yes, it's true, there were variances granted. Can't dispute that. But the difference between those variances and the one that's before you tonight is when those variances were granted, they resulted in a single-family dwelling house being constructed. If you grant this variance this evening, then you're opening the door for the construction of a building that will have two living units. And that is an important difference. Now, Mr. Crusade mentioned hardships, so let's talk about the hardships for a minute. He indicated that one of the hardships is the width of the lot, that it's an undersized lot, that it's got an odd shape, and that there's no legal frontage on Scott Street. Well, as I stated last time, and forgive me again for repeating myself, but this hardship is a hardship of the applicant's own making. When he purchased the lot, or when Ish Anand purchased the lot, he knew, or he should have known, about the lot's width, the shape, the size, and most importantly, the zoning of the lot. This is not a case where the Planning and Zoning Commission has changed the zoning regulations, which would impact on this lot. This is not a case where there's some physical factor that's come into play that impacts on his use of the lot. All of the characteristics that are in play this evening were in play when Mr. Ish Anand purchased the property. And as I mentioned to you last month, and I have to mention it to you again, as Judge Timas said in his decision on Rotman versus Milford Zoning Board of Appeals, he found that the applicant's hardship was self-created, and the facts there were very similar to the facts that are in front of you this evening. We had an undersized lot, we had a non-conforming structure, and a request for one variance. And Judge Timas noted that the applicant could build a structure entirely within the setbacks, which is exactly the case before you this evening. Ish Anand could build a house here within the, struck, within the setback requirements. He doesn't need a variance from you. Now, last month, we also discussed some cases, and these are cases that were raised again by Attorney Crusade. And Judge Timas dealt with those cases when he dealt with the decision in the Rotman versus Milford Zoning Board of Appeal. And one of the cases he cited was Adolphson, which provided that a non-conforming use should not be allowed to increase. And that involved that involved a request to change an aluminum casting boundary to a repair shop. And the court found that court found that the change of, the decrease of the nonconformity was permitted. So if you're decreasing nonconformities, yes, you might be able to, you would be able to obtain a variance. And the same thing for the Stancura case, and the same thing for the Vine case. Now, finally, Mr. Crusade offers the proposition, "Well, I don't have to show hardship because I'm decreasing the nonconformities that were in play prior to this." Well, let's take a look at that. First, he says, "We're reducing the nonconforming, nonconforming side yard in the northwest corner of Maddox to 7.5 feet." But if you look at the map that shows the two houses when they were in existence, the house on the corner of Maddox was 5.14 feet. So we've increased the nonconformity rather than decreasing it on the southwesterly side. And on the souther, on the southerly side, we have a real problem because where there was once three feet from the house to the property line, now we have less than one feet. If you look at the plans that have been submitted by the applicant, you'll see that there's a rectangle that's immediately adjacent to what appears to be the house. And that appears to be the staircase. And the staircase is clearly part of the structure. And if that's the case, then it is almost immediately adjacent to Ms. Picarazzi's property. then it is almost immediately adjacent to Ms. Picarazzi's property. So in fact, instead of eliminating non-conformities on Maddox Avenue, it appears that we've increased them. With respect to the parking situation, parking requirements for a two-family house under Section 5.1.4 require four spots. And there are only three spots that are showing, even if there's a driveway. We don't know if the driveway is sufficient to handle three more cars, as has been proposed by Attorney Crusaden. Mr. Crusaden says that they're going to eliminate the setback issue on Mr. McLeod's side. Well, in the original plan with the original two houses, the house immediately adjacent to Mr. McLeod's house was 6.41 feet away. But now that house is 5.5 feet away. So that non-conformity has not decreased. In fact, it's increased. Now, Mr. Crusaden offers that we're eliminating the non-conforming front yard on the Maddox Street side. In the original plans, that front yard was 11.88 feet. And under our current zoning regulations, for a front yard, only 10 feet is required. So we're not eliminating any non-conforming front use on Maddox Street with this plan. So with respect to the rear of the property, there is no frontage on Scott Street, as Mr. Crusaden states. And so we now have a rear lot. And if this is a rear lot, and a rear lot is defined by our zoning regulations, has open space across the width of the lot between the most rear principal use of the building and the rear lot line. So we have the back of the building, as is shown on the plans. And the distance from the back of the building to the boundary line is 14.49 feet. Now, our zoning requirements for a rear yard require 20 feet. So now we're creating, and if this plan is approved, an additional non-conformity. One last thing, Mr. Chairman. I have to note that in the previous application with the building plans, the applicant showed the square footage of living space for each of the floors. And on this application, that information is not available. We can only speculate that the square footage of living space is more than what was previously in the two houses that were on the property. So, Mr. Chairman, in conclusion, for all the reasons that we've articulated, whether it's a defective application, whether there's no showing of hardship, or whether there is no showing that the non-conformities have been decreased, we urge you to reject this application.
Thank you. Before we move forward, Mr. Harris, would you clarify for us that in fact, there can be a two-family house on that property? And we've only been talking about one variance. Mr. Case has brought it to our attention that he seems to think, well, he's saying there are a lot of other variances. But the city has, we're looking for one variance. So we have to clarify, can you do a two-family house there? And we also have to clarify about the signature on the application. I think we should get that out of the way before we move on any further.
Mr. Chairman, the legal use of the lot is two-family, and it may continue.
How about the signature on the application?
I can't speak to that right now without examining the application and going into the assessor's records.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that.
All right, I was going to just ask you, Mr. Crusaden.
So the applicant, there's no notice issue. Notice has been given to everybody properly by mail and by posting of the sign and on the city website. So I don't know what the notice issue is that Attorney Case is referring to. The applicant is Sachin Anand, who's here tonight. His father is Ishanon, and they are partners, partner owners in this property application. And everything being done tonight is with Mr. Ishanon's consent. So Sachin Anand is the lead on this. He's the one that's working on this for his father and for himself. And so the appellant is Sachin Anand, and he's also a partner in ownership with his father. So there's no issue there, and everything here is being done with the owner's consent. So there's nothing that's fatally defective about this application at all. And I just wanted to reiterate, there's been a lot of discussion, completely irrelevant, about the two-family use. And that issue has been decided by, I've said it several times, just because you keep saying it has not, does not mean that it's an issue again. So all of, you know, I'll address the rest of the questions after this, but those are...
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. What I said was, the application is defective because the owner did not sign it. And in point of fact, Mr. Chairman, there's a box below where Mr. Crusaden signed off that says, if the applicant is not the owner, then the owner consents. And that box is empty. So if Mr. Sashin Anand is not the owner, then we have a defective application. The application...
That's not correct.
Kevin, I let you talk, so I think you could let me finish.
Well, you've been talking a lot about a lot of...
Well, I disagree with most of what you say too. So we can agree to disagree. But this application is defective on its face. It was not properly signed. It shouldn't be considered. It would have been very easy for the owner to sign off on the bottom, but he didn't.
If you didn't hear me before, Sachin Anand is partners in ownership with his father. So he did sign it as one of the owners of the property. So I don't know what...
But that's not...
Look, it's just grasping at technicalities at this point. Clearly, there's a hardship. It's a simple, one-side yard setback variance that doesn't impact Mr. Case's client, and it doesn't impact the first lady who spoke. It's on the opposite side of the property.
Mr. Chairman, this application requires, it says, name of property owner. It doesn't say name of interested party, doesn't say name of partner. It says name of property owner. That's what's required. And that's not what we have here this evening. And I say, Mr. Chairman, this is a defective application on its face because it's not been submitted by the owner. And Mr. Crusaden can say, okay, tell me how owner. If Mr. Sashin Anand is the owner, then I assume you'll have the records to prove that from the land records.
There are many different forms of ownership. There's been official ownership, there's partnership ownership, and that form does not define those. So it really, it really doesn't matter. It really, it makes no difference. The point is that the application's being brought with both owners' consent, and that Mr. Anand, who's here, who's present tonight, is the applicant. This is just another attempt to delay this for another month and make this project drag out. There's really no merit to any of these, really no merit to any of these claims. And it would be, I don't think it would be fair to the applicant for some perceived technicality when owner's not even defined on the form, and it's not even a statutory requirement, that the board say, oh, well, now, you know, Attorney Case has brought up this supposed problem that doesn't really exist. So I think that, I mean, we're prepared to move forward. We're fine with it. So I think that the board should move forward as well.
And I'm sure you are prepared to move forward with it. But I didn't fill the application out.
All right, let's just stop it right there then. Let's just, let me just see. Let's see if we have anyone else that's in opposition, and then we can have a summation of this again at the end. Okay, and then in Mr. Case, you'll be able to rebut for a little while anything that Mr. Crusaden has to say. So again, anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else in opposition?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Olivia Yetter, I'm a resident on Scott Street.
Okay, your name is coming up, is Annie, Annie Kay?
Oh, Annie Crings, yep, she's my roommate.
Would you please give us your name and your address, please?
Annie Crings for Scott Street.
Okay.
And so we actually rent the property from my parents, who are also on the call as well, and who want me to voice some concerns.
Okay.
And their name is Steve Yetter, that you should see on the call. Okay?
Go ahead.
So, you know, it seemed to get a little bit heated there, but I just have some general concerns that they wanted me to express. And then from, we were both on the last Zoom call, so just some general concerns from that too as well. They felt that they were nervous about the property and the location and just runoff flooding the street particularly in that area. So that was their main concern, that that would flood that area of Scott Street. For me, on the last call, I think there was some discussion about some of the parking and how it would kind of provide more parking areas, which seemed to me kind of a flawed, I don't know, argument with regards to where that parking would be located and the fact that it's almost in a backyard-type area, how that would be provided to other residents. But in addition, I wouldn't even understand how that would be safe for the residents in that building or us because of the flooding in that area. So that was some of the concerns that I wanted to bring up. And then also, I think it was mentioned, I mean, it seems like this argument is kind of mute now, but the capacity of that building with regards to the capacity of this particular street and how many people we have on this street. You know, there's issues with it being a two-way street and it essentially being a one-way street. And so the capacity of this building is so high that, you know, there were some concerns around that. But it sounds like that's not necessarily an argument we can enter. But I would just like to hear some reasoning around some of the parking that was mentioned on the last call.
Okay, Mr. Crusaden will address that. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay, Mr. Crusaden, it's yours again to...
Speak, sir.
All right, what is it, Mr. McLeod?
Yes, it's Dr. McLeod speaking, sir. I own the property at 16 Scott Street, which is next door to Mr. Anand's property. And I know many of my neighbors are here to talk. And I'm sort of, I don't want to repeat anything that anybody else has said. But I do want to point out to you, let me just share my screen here. Do you see this letter, sir?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
Well, this letter is from Debbie McGinnley, who's owner of 10 Scott Street. And I believe, I believe this letter was received at the office before, but I'd just like to read it. "I own the home located at 10 Scott Street and oppose the building of two homes or townhouses at the property located at 17 Maddox. For years, this property was blighted, and the building was falling apart. Now, since the property has been sold, the new owner is trying to build two separate buildings on a single-building lot zone for one family. Also, it appears because the owner has put a fence in the inland wetlands and is intending to encroach or use the marsh property for his intended setbacks. Our marsh is part of Milford's inland wetland, and there needs to be a balance for economic growth and the use of land with the need to protect the environment and the ecology. I oppose the use of the property in this manner and oppose the petition to build two homes on this property. Sincerely, Deborah M. McGinnley." Ms. McGinnley could not be here tonight, but she asked me to read this letter into the record for her. And I believe the letter has, is that correct, Ms. Green, that you received this letter?
Yes, I got it via email today.
Okay, good. So Ms. Green does have the letter. And what Ms. McGinnley is concerned about is a major concern for the neighborhood, which is the impact of this development on the wetlands. And if I could, I know that Attorney Crusaden is a highly respected and highly competent, very intelligent Milford attorney. But he was not a party to the attempt to make this wetlands be part of Mr. Anand's property. As an outside developer who's not from Milford, Mr. Anand hired originally an outside attorney, and it was not a quiet title suit. It was an adverse possession lawsuit. And I was very surprised that this lawsuit was filed because when Mr. Anand first purchased the property, I arranged to have a meeting with him. And I knew he was, again, he was an outsider. And he's, look, he's totally entitled to make a big profit if he wants, and he's coming into town and trying to make a big profit. This is the American way. But I felt that I should say to him that in Milford, we're very concerned about our wetlands. And I pointed out to him the boundary of the wetlands and that he could not use the wetlands for a parking place as he originally proposed. He originally wanted to build a parking lot on the wetlands, and that was part of the adverse possession lawsuit. I thought that was understood. And later, I found out from the previous owner of the property, Mike Tarantino, who's for decades, his family, his own, been a property owner in Milford. And as you know, Mike is a very well-known person around town. And Mike told me that Mr. Anand was in fact aware of the wetlands and had come back to him after contracts were signed and negotiated a $25,000 discount based on this wetland situation. So I thought, okay, fine, he got a discount, he's going to protect the marsh. Mr. Crusaden said, I wanted to somehow take possession of this. That's totally not true. I understand, Mr. Crusaden, you were not part of the lawsuit. But that's, I don't know who represented that to you, but that is totally not true. I wanted to protect the wetlands. As I testified in the last hearing, I also purchased the property on the other side of my house and have signed an agreement with the city of Milford not to develop that at all because this is very environmentally sensitive area where we live. So I figured, okay, it's fine. Mr. Anand says he wants to build a single-family house for him and his family to live in. Fine, no problem, we're set. Well, I soon had to leave to go to Pittsburgh to be at the bedside of my dying mother, who passed away on March 24th. And while I was there, I get a call from the neighbor saying, Bob, there's a sheriff at your front door. I said, what? You know, I didn't know I'd violated any laws recently. And so I asked my neighbor to please open and read it to me. And I was being sued by Mr. Anand in this, not a quiet title, an adverse possession lawsuit. So I had to leave my mother, come home, find an attorney, Attorney Case, to represent me in this suit, which I did. We got everything ready. On the evening of March 24th, I was packed up, ready to leave in the morning to go back to my mother's bedside. She died that night. So I was away from her death dealing with this adverse possession hostile lawsuit. Also, now, again, Attorney Crusaden, I understand you was an outside lawyer. You weren't part of this. But the state of Connecticut did not say, did not say, we don't want any part of this, it's okay to annex the marsh. The state of Connecticut, I'm not sure of the legal term, but the state of Connecticut simply asserted that it could not be sued. So in no way did they give up claim. The marsh is owned by the people of the state of Connecticut and of Milford. And so I just wanted to get the record straight that, again, I understand Attorney Crusaden's a tremendously competent guy, and he wasn't involved in this lawsuit. But in fact, I think we should represent it the way it was. So I came back, and finally, the... So I came back and finally, that lawsuit got withdrawn when we had opposition to it. And then we, one day, I looked out the window, and here's this huge piece of equipment. And you can notice it's dredging the marsh. You can see it there, that this equipment is actually dredging the marsh. Right? So I go out and I tell him, I said, "You can't do that. You know, that's inland wetland. What are you doing?" And he said, "Well, you know, I was told, I worked for City Point Construction. I was told to start construction on this marsh." Well, he stopped. The guy was, he was a good guy about it. And he stopped when I asked him to stop, to stop doing that. However, the adverse possession continued. And we now have a situation where, here, this picture was just taken a few days ago, where children, this is, again, this is wetlands. This is a marsh. These are neighborhood children who were coming down here and play. And I asked their mother, "Why is it that your kids don't come down and play anymore?" And she said to me, "Well, you know, they put up a fence. The owner of that property put up a fence. This is the fence that was put up. City Point put their identifying banner backwards. I didn't want to, you know, this is court testimony, so I didn't want to mess with it. But you can read it backwards there. It's the City Point Construction. They put up a fence around the marsh. I went out and asked them, I said, "What are you guys doing? You can't put up a fence on state property. This is the marsh. You can't do that." The City Point guy said, "No, no, this is Mr. Anon's property." I said, "I'm sorry, it's not Mr. Anon's property." He said, "No, I have a map here that Mr. Anon gave me, and he told me to put up this fence." Well, you know, I'm not, I'm just a, you know, simple 74-year-old guy. I'm not going to get in a fight with a, with a construction guy. So I just didn't pursue it further. And he put up the fence, and obviously, I'm not going to get involved in taking it down, even though some of the neighbors said that I had, I could have done that. So now we have a situation. I don't know what's going on here. I'm sure Attorney Crusaden would not advise his client to illegally fence off state property. You can see the marsh grasses growing in the background of that fence. So there's obviously some other game is being played here to try to own, to try to own the marsh that is adjacent to this property. I mean, maybe somebody here could explain to us. This is, this is one of three, this is one of three illegal, illegal things that have been done. The second thing, which I showed the, I showed the photos of at the last hearing, was all the garbage they left after the construction is still on the marshland, defying an order by Ms. Colombo, an official of the city of Milford. They are defying an order to remove that garbage, and they have just left it there. Right? So that's number two, which is, which is, again, again, Mr. Anon's an outside guy. He obviously doesn't care about Milford. But to blatantly defy an order from a city official, I mean, that's wrong.
All right, so just, this seems to be, I mean, a little bit more about the character of the person that's the applicant for this right now. And it's, we're getting away from the actual issue of the variance.
So I understand what you're saying.
Go ahead, if you have a few more points, because we'd like to sum this up.
I understand what you're saying, but I do think character is relevant because once you give an approval of something, you don't know what's going to happen. So I do think it's relevant, and I do think it's relevant that an outside person has the nerve to blatantly ignore an order from a city official. I mean, is that right? Is that okay?
I, you know, I believe it's not right, but it's like, it's a separate issue from what we're talking about right now. And I don't know how that could be addressed, but...
Well, it could be addressed. You're the protectors, I mean, you're Milford residents. You're the protectors of Milford. We look to you. You're our elected representatives. We look to you for help in protecting the marsh. Okay, I'll drop it and I'll go on to the other parts. Okay, so the two, as Attorney Case pointed out, we don't know what the square footage is. We think it's around 5,000 square feet between these two houses, but we don't really know. We do know that these two townhouses between them have eight bedrooms and six bathrooms. Okay? And they, and they take up, in terms of lot coverage, roughly double what the other, the two old, the bungalow and the old single-family house took. So that means, where is that water going to go? Well, you know where the water, well, we don't know where the water is going to go. I showed in the last, I don't want to take up too much more time, but I did show in the last hearing, there's big ponds of water on this property. Okay, so now, let's just, let's just consider a very plausible situation here. And again, Mr. Anon's in this to make money. That's the American way. But we also are, we need to protect Milford from people just coming into town, making money, popping out of town. So if you look at these two townhouses and look at the property values in the neighborhood, each one is going to sell for around $500,000. Maybe $450,000, maybe $550,000. But look at the, look at the property values in the neighborhood. And...
So again, are we talking about one house here, or now we're two?
Well, the application...
The proposal is for one house.
The proposal's for two townhouses, isn't it? The way I read it, there's two houses.
I don't, Mr. Harris, it's for one, one house that's a two-family house. Is that correct?
The proposal, the applicant is applying for a variance, a side yard variance to build one building with two units.
Yes, sir, I understand. But the two units could be very easily turned into a condominium without anybody's approval, and each unit could be sold independently. Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
The type of ownership is not, go ahead, Kevin.
I, I don't know what these issues have to do with the variance request respectfully. Mr. McLeod has had his attorney speak at length. Now, he's spoken at length. I think that the wetlands, as a matter of fact, we've already gotten wetlands approval for the project. He's not in violation of anything. So I'm not really sure.
Well, then, why is he putting a fence up on state property and acting like it's his property? Did you, did, I don't think that's okay, Mr. Crusaden.
Well, we don't have any way of controlling that right now, so...
Okay, could I just, could I finish my last point, please? Because...
Sure, sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so assuming these are made into condominiums and sold. Now, it's, it's very well established at the present time because of our unfortunate COVID-19 situation, that people from New York are moving to this area and buying houses. That's just a real estate fact. So if they do move here, it is quite plausible that after the health scare is over, families, New York families could have these houses for their summer houses. They're within walking distance to the beach, as Mr. Crusaden pointed out in the last hearing. And then they could rent them. As you know, in, in this area on East Broadway, there are many student rentals exactly like this, where people have nice summer houses and they rent them to students. Well, students are going to have between one and two people for each bedroom. So eight bedrooms. You could conceivably have eight to 10 to 12 to 14, even 16 students living in these houses. This is, and this is a plausible situation. Where are they going to park when there's only three parking places? And again, we have no control. It's condominium ownership. And if you look down East Broadway, you'll see this goes all, is a very prevalent situation. Okay, sir, thank you for indulging me.
Okay, anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else speaking in opposition? All right, Mr. Crusaden, you have a lot to clear up here, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's been a lot of conversation, but there's really not a lot to clear up. And I'll tell you why. Because the, let me start with the, the, I'll start backwards from one of the, actually, one of the relevant things that Mr. or Dr. McLeod brought up. So, so the land issue in the back is brought up to, I brought that up to inform you that we don't have legal frontage on Scott Street. That's the end of it. The, you know, the adverse possession versus quiet title and all that other stuff, none of that matters. The reason that the application for the house is situated on Maddox Avenue is because we don't have legal frontage on Scott Street. So, which is, you know, you could argue that that's another hardship. We have, we have legal hardships. The fact that somebody buys something knowing what they have, that's not the standard. The standard is anybody could have come in here and asked for a variance because the lot is undersized, which you see, this board sees all the time. The lot is narrow, especially on the Maddox Avenue side, which this board sees all the time. He's designed everything and done everything to make one simple variance request, and he's even reduced it from the one that was last month. So those hardships all exist. All of the case law and the statutes, and I can agree to disagree with Attorney Case about what they mean, but it's just being, it's just being thrown up there to see what sticks and to distract the board from the fact that we actually have legal hardships. And so the, if somebody was coming in to buy, to build a single-family house, they would need a side yard setback variance because otherwise, you have a house that's 15 feet wide. So that's not acceptable or feasible. And the, the board routinely grants these, these variances. Mr. Anon was also very careful not to have, not to request any variances or violate any zoning regulations or encroachments on the side of Dr. McLeod or on the side of 17 Maddox. And, you know, you can have a staircase that's in the setback. There's nothing wrong with that. Mr. Harris has looked at this application several times now. There hasn't been any other variances that have, that have been discussed. So the, the square footage of these, these proposed houses, I don't have it in front of me, but it was not part of the original application. The square footages are reduced now, I believe. I don't know if our architect is still on the line or not because of the fact that we shaved two and a half feet off the side of the building last month based on the board's request and a denial without prejudice. So I have both Mr. Anons are on. I believe Mr. Ishanand will, can speak in a moment that, you know, he gives consent to this application. And then he and John are, are partners in ownership for this partner, for this parcel, as well as business partners. I don't think that that's really an issue. I would, I would go back to some of Attorney Case's comments. This is not a rear lot. A rear lot would mean we don't have any frontage on a city street, and we have frontage on Maddox Avenue. So it's, it's not a rear lot. The side yard, the side yard setbacks that he brought up for the, for the, in the back of the property on his client's property were, were within all of the setback requirements. So I'm not sure where that's coming from other than a misunderstanding of the plans or something like that. But, so the hardship runs with the land. And I think that any builder that was coming in here, whether they intend to make it their, their primary home or they intend to sell it, would be in here requesting a side yard setback variance. There's just a lot of pushback from the neighbors, which are on the other side of the property. It's already been reduced, and that has no impact on what's going to be built on their side of the property. You know, the inland wetlands, my client's, as far as I know, not in violation of anything. We have actually wetlands approval for the project with the, with the five, with the five-foot setbacks. So we've already got wetlands approval for this, for this project. So I don't think he's in violation of any, any wetlands or he's encroaching on any state property or anything like that. The, I'll ask my, I'll ask my client to talk about the consent to this application, even though I think it's completely unnecessary, but it's just another object or shiny object to draw your attention from the fact that we have legitimate legal hardships and that the board, you know, as you know, Mr. Chairman, grants hardships of this type routinely. The reason I included the other hardships, excuse me, the other variances from the, you know, 17 Maddox and Dr. McLeod's side and some other people in the neighborhood was to point out to you that, does that mean that you should automatically grant this variance because they were granted? No, that was not the intention of filing those. The intention of filing those was to show you that those same, either their predecessors in interest of the people that are objecting tonight, or they themselves had applied to variances to this board and received them claiming hardships that their, that their lots were too narrow and that their lots were undersized. So now that they have their houses built and all of the houses down, there's a lot of really nice houses down there. It's a great street. It's, is it close and tight? Yeah, it's close and tight. But what's being proposed is not any more, you know, is not any more larger or massive than what's already, than, than some of the houses that are already built down there. Now, with respect to the parking, with one of the neighbors that called in about the parking, we have spots for six parking spaces. What existed on Maddox Avenue before was zero parking spaces, off-street parking, because the house was so close to the street. So, you know, we've, any structure that's being built there, because it will be elevated, is going to have sufficient parking for what it is. And there's a lot being made about this two-family and the size of it. Milford doesn't have any square footage limitations in their zoning regulations. Somebody could come in and build a 5,000-square-foot house as law, you know, or whatever, 6,000, 7,000, as long as they meet the lot coverage and the impervious surface coverage requirements and the setback requirements. And in this case, somebody coming in to build a single-family home would also be asking for this same variance or even more of a variance. And, and that argument about it being a two-family versus a single-family would be completely gone. So I don't think it's, that's not what the issue is. And they're trying to divert the board's attention from that, with that issue. And, you know, Attorney Case is doing what he's supposed to do in representing his client. But that doesn't change the fact that a two-family use is allowed on that lot and, and that you can put it in one structure. You've heard Stephen Harris say it repeatedly. You saw Joe Griffith's email that's part of this. That's what's, that's what's allowed on the lot. And it's not an abandoned use. It's clear that it's not an abandoned use, that, you know, yeah, he demolished them. But the statute and the case law protects people who demolish buildings so that they can replace the use and/or the structures that were there. So I would just ask the Anons to confirm that, what we had talked about earlier, that they consent to this application as owners, that they are partners in ownership and business partners. They are father and son, and I really think that that's an non-issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Case, go ahead. I said you would be able to speak briefly.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Can I have the Anons speak? And then I...
Sure, absolutely.
I think as the applicant's attorney, I think I have the last right to rebut anything.
Sure, okay. All right, all right, let Mr. Case talk, and then, then you'll be up again, Mr. Crusaden.
Okay, can I have the Anons chime in?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Case.
Can I, can I go, or is Attorney Case going?
Let Attorney Case go first. Okay, hold on one second. Go ahead, Mr. Case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first on the application issue. The regulations provide that the board creates the application. So the application that's been created requires the property owner to sign off. And to be absolutely certain about this, Mr. Chairman, there's a, there's a failsafe because it also provides that if someone else signs the application, that the owner would then consent to it. There's a block right beneath where Mr. Crusaden signed off. So I would submit to you, Mr. Chairman, that this is a defective application. And let me be very clear, Mr. Chairman. I didn't write this application. I didn't draft it. I had nothing to do with it. I'm simply reporting to you what's there. Now, if Mr. Anon wants to come forward and say, "Oh, yes, now I consent," that just reinforces what we're saying, that it was not properly signed. So I would submit to you it's defective. You know where I, where I stand on that. Just with respect to the action from the state of Connecticut, just to be very clear about that, the Attorney General reported to Mr. Anon's attorney that under the doctrine of sovereign immunity, that Mr. Anon could not bring a lawsuit against the state. And that was the basis upon which that lawsuit was, was ultimately withdrawn because it was not going to be resolved. I will reiterate, the touchstone of any variance is you must show hardship. And I submit to you that the applicant purchased... And I submit to you that the applicant purchased the property and he knew what he was getting into. He knew all about these issues. I'll submit to you, Mr. Chairman, that he could build something. He wouldn't even have to come to you, as long as he met all of the setbacks. We wouldn't, we would not even be here. But he wants something that's larger. He's created a hardship. And as Judge Timas said, in the Rotman versus Zoning Board of Appeals, you create the hardship. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't fly. You can't argue that I want to do something and I've now created, I self-created a hardship, and that's justification for you to grant my variance. So last but not least, Mr. Chairman, I, I've said that I believe there's a rear setback requirement that's missing here, because from the rear of the house, as is shown on the plan, there's only 14.49 feet. And I believe our zoning requirements for an R8, for an R5 zone are very clear. For a rear yard, you have to have 20 feet. So if this application is granted, you'll have created a non-conformity. So again, Mr. Chairman, I, I've said all that I think I should say. I think we've, I, we've taken, we've prevailed upon your patience. We have to make a record. I appreciate your patience. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. So I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to, in, involved with this again. Mr. Harris, on the application, can you address the signature on the application, please? And as stated right now, is there, is the rear property needing a variance that was missed?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have an application that's stamped received June 24th, 2020 to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The appellant's name is Suchin Anand. The name of the property owner is also Suchin Anand.
All right, that's that. Okay. How about the variance on the rear?
As far as the rear yard, it's 20 feet from the rear property line. But in cases like this, the rear property line is mean high water, not what may be incorrectly or correctly shown on the map. So wherever mean high water falls, that would be the rear lot line.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Anand, please. You're up.
Go ahead. I just want to tell my attorney, should I go now? Like just, my father was with me, sitting in the back.
Go ahead.
Hopefully you can see him, stuff like that. Yeah, we've been, we've been, we've been partnering this from beginning, from get-go, since we bought it. But it wasn't our, so we are, my father is basically, takes a backseat in this, you know, he's been, as you can say, he's my main guy. I'm, I'm just on the road. So, so that kind of, that kind of relationship we have there, we are father, son. We are, we try to do business together, and that's what we're doing. And he's fully aware of what's going on. It's nothing, there's no consent issue there. Nothing that he's not, he's, he's been brought to every process. That's the reason he's sitting here right now.
Okay.
He's been, he's been part of the process from the beginning.
Okay.
I will, that's all I want to add. I know that's, that's all it is. And I would just say, thanks for hearing what, what I wanted to say. And I would turn this over back to my attorney and.
All right. Yep. So, all right. Thank you for summing that up. And Mr. Crusaden, you have the last word right now.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, one, one thing on the, on the rear setback. What Mr. Harris said, I, I agree with as well. But previously on that, we, we've reduced the previous setback from the house that was there. So we've actually reduced the pre-existing non-conformity of that rear yard setback. So even if what Mr. Harris said was not accurate, we've pulled that, we've pulled that setback back all the way to the back of the new structure. So that, there, there's no, there's no missing variances with this. It's a simple, and if, and if there was, which there's not, and you approved it tonight, and you decide, you, someone determined that there was a missing variance, we'd have to come back in or change the plans. I mean, so it's not like, you know, this gets approved, and then that's the end of the, end of the discussion. You're not, if there, if, if there's something that could have been in front of the board tonight, which I submit to you respectfully that there is not, but if there were, you would have the option to, well, we'd have to come back, we'd either have to redesign the plan or come back in for a variance. So you heard from the Anands, their business partners, their ownership partners, the father consents to the application. It's not an issue. I, it's, it's just something that's trying to distract from the board acting.
All right. So Commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Crusaden? Any questions for Mr. Crusaden before we close this? We're all set?
I, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Sarah. Ms. Ferranti.
Yeah, how wide is the house at the Maddox Avenue side?
30 feet.
I think you're muted.
Kevin, you have to, you have to. Mr. Crusaden, the question's for you.
You're on mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. I don't know if our architect is still here. He'd be better able to answer that. But the house, the, the property is about 35 feet wide at the start of the house, and we, we have five feet on one side and, and seven and a half feet on the other side. I don't know, Mr. Miller, are you present?
Have the site plan up. Can you, everybody see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's about, let's see. I don't know if Mr. Miller's present or not, the architect.
I do see him, he's muted. So let me just message him, maybe unmute himself real quick.
So in any event, it's about, it's about 35 feet wide where it's at. So the, the lots, the lot lines are. So the house would be 25 feet. It'd be like 22 and a half feet or so approximately.
Okay. Ms. Ferranti, you all set with that?
Yes.
You are. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Who is this place? Who is this place? Who's speaking?
Steve Yeder.
All right. So have you been in before? I asked for opposition before. Are you opposed or, I asked for?
We're opposed, but I've been having issues with the get, just getting this Zoom stuff to work. But our question was about, about the, it looks like that the drainage is going to flood Scott Street. So we were concerned that there, there would be a lot of gallons of water dumped on the Scott Street.
Can I, can I ask Mr. Yeder for his address?
Whoever's speaking, hold on. Whoever's speaking, just don't just jump in there, please. Let Mr. Yeder finish what he's saying, and then we'll get to you, okay?
Mr. Chair, can you, can Mr. Yeder provide his address, please?
We need your address, Mr. Yeder.
It's for Scott Street.
Okay, number four Scott Street. Okay. Your concern, your concern was drainage. Correct.
Right, drainage, right. It looks like there's going to be 4,000 gallons of water dumped on the Scott Street.
And on a usual rainy, this is.
Wait a minute, who's speaking now? We don't.
From Fort Scott Street. When on a usual rainy day, Scott Street gets flooded, let alone having 4,000 gallons of water come our way. The drains, as you've noticed, in the corners of the house are pointed all on three sides towards Scott Street. Are you going to provide sewage in that area? A new sewage system from the city of Milford for Scott Street, for that back area?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I ask the last speaker to spell her first name?
Like, I don't even see her. Where are you on this board? I don't even see her, ma'am.
She's with me, Steve Yeder, that's my wife.
Okay.
I, I need a first name, please.
T O M A S A, Kamasa.
Thank you.
All right, as far as your questions.
I mean.
Your actual question is speculation, so do you have fact on that?
No, fact is that every time it rains, Scott Street gets flooded. You ought to come and take a look at the neighborhood sometime. Maybe you'll see.
Well, we are familiar with the neighborhood. We all, most of the commissioners have driven by and looked at the property.
On a rainy day?
Well.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I can, I can answer that question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Crusaden.
So as part of the wetlands approval, we had the city engineer review several different iterations of plans and approve the plan as proposed.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm not sure FEMA will approve of that.
All right, you all set, ma'am? Are you all set, ma'am? Okay.
Yes.
All right. So the Commissioners, I, I'm at the point now where I've been asking Commissioners if they have any questions for Mr. Crusaden. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to close this hearing. All right, no one? Okay. This hearing's closed. Okay. Board members, you've heard enough, I believe. So what we're looking at is a variance, one variance. The city, you know, the city's position on this right now, about how they can build a house. So that's pretty much it. We're, we're just looking, this, there's a lot of speculation on a lot of other concerns and everything. We, we don't, you know, it's, we're not addressing that, anything characters of the people doing things. We're looking at the variance on the one, that one variance right now. And that's, we're either going to approve or we're not going to approve. So. So we need a motion. Or, or any comments from you?
I'll, I'll make a motion. He, Tom Hirsch.
Okay.
Motion to deny the application.
Okay. Do we have a second on it? Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Sarah said?
Yeah, I'm going to second it because, you know, we've heard a lot of grievances from the neighbors tonight that don't, don't actually have much bearing. I think that there's a lot of concern over this project, and it isn't necessarily the purview of this board. The fact is, the house is 22 and a half feet wide, and we've approved applications in these tight lots before at 20-foot wide houses. If this house went to 20 feet, there would be no side yard variance request, and that would be that.
Sarah, you're absolutely correct. And moreover, I believe that the hardship is created by the, by the Anands themselves. So if you create the hardship, you can't come say, well, I need a variance for the hardship that I created.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to deny, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Casey, your vote, please.
Against the motion.
Okay. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
Against the motion.
I'm against the motion. Motion failed.
Okay, so what does that mean?
What are we doing, Mr. Harris?
Entertaining another motion.
Mr. Casey or Mr. Dubois? You want to make a motion?
Oh, sorry. A motion to approve, there's a, like, we, well, we have, we have the, the setbacks. And I think that we should approve the motion.
Okay. Second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Gary. All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion again. Ms. Ferranti?
Against the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
Against the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
And Mr. Casey?
With the motion.
And I'm with the motion.
So it's three, so it's three to two?
Mr. Harris will sum this up.
The motion to approve failed by three to two.
Motion to deny failed too.
The motion to deny failed, two in favor, three against the motion, which is why you entertain a second motion to approve. The motion to approve failed, three yays and two nays. You need four to approve a motion.
Exactly, exactly. Where do we stand now with this, with this application?
The motion failed. This, the, the application is, is denied.
Okay, then. All right. So we have a long agenda to finish going through here. And, you know, all you other people, your applicants, I see you sitting out there waiting. Parish Street, Hillside Avenue, Wolf Harbor, Kings Highway, Fenway North. Thank you for your patience. We should be able to, to move along now with this meeting. Does anyone need any time? Want me to recess this, this meeting for a few minutes?
Yeah, can you recess, Joe, for five minutes?
Sure, sure. Any other requests? Okay. We'll recess for five minutes. It's 8:26, 8:31. Okay, thank you. Okay, eight thirty-one, we're gonna get started again, Ms. Ferranti, item number three.
Item number three, One Parrish Street, MVP forty-nine slash seven-one-six slash six, R five, Steven and Carla Vandermeer owners, vary section four-point-one-point-four, setback of five feet, three inches, where eight feet is permitted for spiral staircase.
Okay, thank you, okay, speaking on this, please?
Good evening, my name is, little feedback, please, we'll fix that.
Mr. Bowler, are you speaking on Parrish Street?
Good evening, yes, I am, thank you commissioner, thank you board members.
You're doing the presentation for them, I take it?
I will, I'm sitting here with Steven and Carla Vandermeer, and social distancing, so they're in another room, and I'm out in the construction zone, so.
So, um. We need your address, sir.
My address is forty-four Lindley Road, I live in Trumbull, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I don't know if you can bring up the document that we submitted, and I'll walk through that real quick. And I don't know, Meg? There we go.
You see this?
I see it.
Okay.
But I lost it.
Standby, please.
And I trust that our appeal will be much simpler and brief, more brief than the previous.
Well, you know, I have to apologize to all you people, but you got an education on the system works, it just, just had a very difficult one.
Yeah, it really is a testament to the fact that the system does in fact work, and, you know, it's how communities remain communities, so I appreciated watching that, to be honest. Are the documents back up on the screen, I'm not seeing them.
Mr. Griffith's working on it, I believe.
Very good. Excellent.
Okay.
So that is the survey showing, perhaps we can jump ahead a page or two, just to show a picture of the actual stilt staircase, just so that we know what we are in fact talking about, there she blows, it's, you have to turn your head this way, but.
That is an example of which you're proposing, correct?
Almost an identical application, our first deck, when we go back to a photo of the house, is ten feet off the ground, and the second feet, the second deck is twenty feet off the ground, the stairway itself has a diameter roughly sixty inches, and the, the stilts will be about twenty-seven inches off the existing foundation. We have ten inches, ten feet and four inches existing as a setback now, and we're looking to come into that roughly five feet. So, that's what we're talking about, we can go back to the map, or and perhaps just scroll through the pages, that's the location, see that we've got ten foot four there presently. Scrolling back down through the pages, it will just show you where on the house it's gonna be located, it's kind of in a, in an alleyway sort of a place, you can see Hillside Avenue is to the right there. There's about, there's a retaining wall there, roughly four and a half to five-foot drop-off, so most of the stilt would be obscured by not only the retaining wall, but the shrubbery as well, the hedge row. And then, I'm not an architect, I'm not an attorney, I did this in a word program, and simply placed it about where it's gonna be. Based on the photograph of the product itself, and based upon what you're seeing here in this photograph, that's about what you will be seeing. The one thing I'd like to add, when you're looking at this photo, while we are adding an element to what's going on here with this house, those privacy screens that you see on the first level deck and the second level deck are all gonna be replaced. All that is gonna be glass all around, so people further up Hillside, and, you know, we've spoken with the neighbors, you know, they're actually gonna have a less obscured view to Long Island Sound, and, you know, as you scroll down further into this document, you know, we just snapped a few pictures around the neighborhood, and, oh, you know what, stop right there, I apologize. The, go back up one more page, the reason that we can't do the staircase on the inside is because in the foreground of this particular photo is a very small, roughly thirteen by six, I guess what you would call entertainment area on the first level. The stairway, when it was built, was just, you know, wasn't put in the most thoughtful place, and we can't bring the spiral staircase inside because of the doorway into the living area right there. So scrolling to the next page. All right, we can skip that, that's the product, this is details on the product, if anybody would like to see it, but it's roughly a sixty-inch diameter circle. This is looking back towards Long Island Sound on that same deck, and you can get, gain perspective, and this is the upper deck, and that's, you know, that's the view right there. This deck is only accessible by coming in through the living area, going up, down a hallway, up two flights of stairs, and then through the master bedroom to gain entrance to it. And so what we're simply looking to do is to connect the entertainment spaces in as economically feasible way as possible, with the lowest impact possible, and then trying to augment that a little bit for the neighbors by getting rid of these privacy fences, and, you know, just opening it up and making it feel much more airy and open, so. That is pretty much where we're at, the next page simply shows that, you know, spiral staircases are pretty much in keeping with the neighborhood as an architectural element, you know, used in a whole bunch of different applications, and so we are open to taking any questions from members of the board, or any interested neighbors.
All right, so I have a question for you, do you think this presents any kind of safety hazard, being to the outside, because one of the questions probably that would have been asked is, why can't you put it on the inside? And you already, you have shown us a picture at the end of this, all these diagrams of a staircase that is on the inside, and I understand there's a sliding door right over there, but is that all already established on that end, or can it be put on the other end?
Okay, if we were to go to the other end, then that completely eliminates any enjoyment of the lower deck whatsoever. That area down at that, at the top of the stairway that goes from the ground level up to the first level deck is roughly five and a half to six feet wide by about twelve feet wide, so putting in a five-foot diameter stairway would, it would basically eliminate use of that first-story deck.
So one of the other things that we require is a hardship, so what would your hardship be? Asking for?
Having presented before many zoning boards in the past, you know, I find this a somewhat subjective term, and in this case, the hardship is the fact that in order to gain access to that fabulous view that you saw from the upper deck, you know, picture yourself having company over, saying, okay, let's go up and watch the sunset, and I'm bringing you up through my master bedroom. And, you know, I look across the street, right across, directly across Hillside, and we essentially have a four-story building right there, when their deck coming, projecting out on a cantilever off of the fourth story. That's what is done to gain access to these fabulous views.
Do they access their, to their top, to their top one, is there the balcony on the top, or is it?
I don't know the neighbor well, I don't know if they have an elevator, I just don't have an idea of how they do it.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time with the hardship.
I understand.
We really need kind of a genuine hardship.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The hardship has to go with the land, not the use of the property. So, does he have a hardship for the land that requires this outside?
Could I, could I venture, hi, my name's Steven Vandermerwe, I'm at One Parrish, I'm the owner of the property along with my wife Carla. As far as a safety issue, at this point, there's like, there's one internal staircase, the two decks are not joined together at this point, and so by adding a staircase, it would increase the ability to exit the structure in the case of a fire.
Well, most third-floor decks aren't decks, they're actually called balconies because they only have access from the inside of the house, that's how most beach houses are, the second-floor deck has the stairs to get down, and, I mean, if you had a fire, you go out on the deck and you wait for the firemen to come and get you with the ladder. The hardship has to go with the land, though.
In terms of the land, I mean, the only hardship we can, you know, point to there is that we cannot move this stairway into the interior of the deck without losing the entire.
Okay, you got that front, that front corner, from the sliding door to the outside of the deck, how many feet do you have, how wide is that front deck?
Can we take down this, our graphs, please, so we can see who's talking, thank you.
How wide is the front deck, from the sliding door to the outside rail? Did you say twelve feet before?
No, no, there's not, no, you have approximately, approximately seven and a half to eight feet.
So, that deck is eight foot wide?
At that point.
It looks wider than eight feet.
No, it is, I'm sorry, it is wider there, but you have the stairway coming up.
I understand, I'm just talking from the sliding door to the outside railing, not including the stairwell, how many feet do you have?
Twelve feet.
Is it twelve feet?
Twelve feet.
Okay, so twelve minus the five-foot stairwell, you would still have seven feet in front of the sliding door to put that staircase in that corner.
Correct, if we can go back to that picture, I think that will give you a better.
I mean, if you have to slide the stairs a little bit to the water, you know, that's, that's something that you have to do, I mean, from the, from the handrail, the guardrail at the end of the stairs to the, the, the right side of the deck, how many feet are there? So from, from that side rail there to the outside solid rail, how many feet are there?
Are you talking about the header up above the, the top of the stair?
Basically, from the header to the outside, to the right side where you want it?
About four, roughly four feet there, just about enough room for a grill.
Okay, so, I mean, you could slide that header down a foot and move your stairs a foot, and you have your five feet, and your staircase would fit in there perfect.
Actually, you can't move that header forward because, you know, you're, if you're a six-foot person, you're just.
No, you have to slide the whole, you have to slide the stairs with it to keep the same header, you need eighty inches from the step to the header.
Sliding the steps would be significantly add to the cost we.
Well, that's, that's not a problem, I mean, I'm just giving you a solution without getting a variance for this. I'm just telling you the solutions, you know?
But then we are also losing even more deck.
Well, you have.
There's already not enough room for a table.
Well, but that, you're not gonna put a table in that little corner anyway, you only said it's four feet by, by seven feet, seven twelve feet. I'm just giving you solutions to this, that's all I'm doing.
Understood. At that end of the deck where you're talking about where the patio door comes out, that's roughly a four-foot slot, almost enough room for a barbecue grill. When you come to where the up, the upper stair landing is, you have roughly.
Well, show me the other picture from the, from the slider to the other side there, I think you have plenty of room to put a grill on that end.
Do the next photo down. The page has gotten a little bit out of order, but there you have it.
Yeah, where those chairs are, you have plenty of room, they're plus.
This is the second floor, this is the second floor where the staircase comes up, correct?
Right, well, do you see where you have those four chairs lined up, you could fit a grill there and table and everything.
I'm sorry, Mr. Soda, I couldn't hear what you said there?
Where those four chairs are at the end there, you have plenty of room for a grill and a table right there.
Actually, you know what, if you were standing there, it's simply not the case, not without impacting safety at the top of the stair landing, it's simply not the case if you had people sitting on two sides.
Also, you're also gonna have the third floor too, for chairs and everything too, the third deck, the upper deck, once you put the staircase in.
That's exactly what we're trying to access, so if you were to put the spiral staircase within the footprint of the deck, essentially, you know, you, where you see the chairs there now, first of all, it's a view killer, but second of all.
I'm not talking.
Now they're become, now they're.
I'm not talking putting it where the chairs are, I'm talking putting it in front of the slider in the corner there, that front right corner, looking at it from the street, the front right corner.
As, as much as this picture is showing, it, it's not showing that, that's simply not a viable option, it really just doesn't work. There's, you know, you can count the number of floorboards, or six-foot decks.
See, you can also, you can also offset the railing into it, and you're, the spiral on your stair will give you the header, you follow what I'm saying?
If you were to.
By moving that, you could move that, if you have four feet there, you can move that rail one foot in towards, towards the top of the stairs, and then position your spiral, and you won't have, you won't even have to move the header.
I certainly understand what you're saying, but if you simply look at this picture, and you count the number of deckboards, which are roughly, give or take, six inches each, you can see we've only got six feet there to accomplish that in. And to push that stairway further out seaward, you further can.
You told me you had twelve feet, you told me it was a twelve-foot deck.
So you'd also be cutting into the deck, and, you know, by reducing the structural integrity of the deck, as opposed to having a separate element outside, that would be most structurally sound on its own.
There's, there's also a gas line.
The deck, and that, honestly, I mean, that could be moved, but the reality is, I mean, Mr. Soda, if you, if you count the deck planks there, and I apologize if I misquoted the number, but, I mean, you can clearly see that between the wall of the house and before you get to that stairway, we're talking about six feet there.
Right, and how wide is the staircase, four feet?
A little bit less.
But the, the front door is literally two, you're right.
Even if the deck's ten feet, and you put a five-foot staircase, you still have five feet of clearance in front of the sliding door.
Okay, you know what?
And that's not gonna, that's not gonna obstruct the view at all.
I would ask you to go back to the shot that shows the entire house, and take a look at the entrance to the home beneath, and where the door is to get into the home, so to, you know, move that stairway one way or the other.
No, you don't have to move the stairwell at all. You don't even have to move the header, because as the stairs spiral, they go up, so they're not even, you could move the railing only, slide the railing, you still have the header, you'd still have the clearance of your floor joists. You'd pick up the clearance of your floor joists, so if you have eighty inches now, and you got two by eights, you'd have eighty-eight inches of clearance, and now the spiral would be above that a little bit, but you moved, you moved the railing, so you wouldn't have to move the stairs or the header, and you pick up your five square.
If you're looking at this photograph, and you see where the entrance to the deck is on the second level, and where the entrance or the exit from the bedroom on the third level, what you're calling a balcony, I mean, you're talking about putting a stairway, you know, smack dab right in the middle of those two doorways, so now we'd be looking at moving those two doorways closer to the middle of the house.
No, you don't have to move the doorway at all, because you have five feet of clearance from the stairway to the door, you only need three by code.
So, Mr. Soda, then the, I hear what you're saying, but the alternates, alternatives would be either putting that staircase directly in front of the front door, or moving it across to the kind of really the only place.
No, the front door is on the, on the first floor level.
No, it's not.
It's just not, there's some.
The front door is actually on the second level.
You've got a ten-foot deck, you put a five-foot diameter set of stairs in the front corner, you still have five feet in front of the door.
So your choices would be?
Ten minus five is five.
But the choices, the choices then would be between putting that spiral staircase directly in front of the front door, or moving it across to the only really seatable area that you could use, which would, you know, essentially, you go from having maybe four guests to two guests, because you've now got a spiral staircase on the, on the far left there, which is, you know, that's.
I'm, I'm just giving you solutions, I think it would look a lot nicer inside.
You're certainly giving us, you're certainly giving us ideas, and we appreciate that, thank you.
It gets, it gets back to, you know, what I had said before, we actually really need a legitimate. It gets, it gets back to, you know, what I had said before, we actually really need a legitimate, a good hardship, a good reason why. And there are some ways around, not giving you a variance for this. So there have been some suggestions, which fortunately you're lucky enough to, to be able to get, you know, so we have some other ideas. Anyone else speaking in favor of this right now? Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Do we have any other questions for the owner or the builder, Mr. Bowler? Any questions, commissioners? No? Any other, any other final statement, Mr. Bowler?
Um, no, other than the fact that we are trying to mitigate, um, you know, the impact of adding an element by uh, going through the expense of eliminating the privacy fencing in order to open up the view as, um, you know, it, it's not being done solely for us to open up the view to Hillside Avenue. Um, but really just trying to keep this open, airy, um, architecturally pleasing. And, uh, in, in terms of a hardship, you know, again, it really has to do with the enjoyment of, of the home and the land and uh, you know, wanting to entertain and the hardship of, you know, going through the house, through hallways, up stairways, through a master bedroom. Um, and the added safety of having an additional egress in the event of an emergency. Um, you know, if there were to be an emergency in the center of the house, um, the master bedroom is, you know, two flights up and in a center stairwell, which frankly goes straight down to the furnace area. If there were to be a safety issue, that's probably, you know, where it might start. So having this is an additional safety issue.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the hearing is closed. Okay, so board members, we're open for comments.
Eitan Hirsch.
Yep.
Yeah, in the, in the application made by the applicant and the builder, there was nothing in there for hardship about safety. That only came about today when they realized they were losing their arguments.
All right. Anyone else? Any other comments? Any other comments?
I just want to say, Joe, that, you know, the hardship, we've always been told goes with the land and not, you know, safety or anything like that. So that's, I really don't think it's a hardship.
All right, we will, we offer some options too, so that was nice to be. All right, so, uh, we, Mr. Bowler, I close, Mr. Bowler, we can't have any, we have any comments? I closed the hearing, so there's no more, no more room for comments. Um, any other board members with comments? All right, we need, we need a motion.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. We have a second. All right, a motion to deny and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti.
With the motion.
Mister, let's see, Mister Casey.
With the motion.
Okay, Mr. Soda.
With the motion.
Who else do we have here right now? Mister Dubois.
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's tonight. Reason being hardship, lack of a hardship. Item number, Ms. Ferranti.
Item number four, 75 Hillside Avenue, M B P forty-nine slash seven twenty-four slash six R five. Milos Novotny for Samuel and Louise Blaney, owners vary section three point one, point four point one. Setback of three point five feet where four feet is required for three concrete planters.
Okay, who's speaking on this, please? Who's speaking on this? Item number four, 75 Hillside Avenue. I see your mouth was moving, Mister. Your, your phone, we need, we need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Am I, who are you? Samuel or?
No, I'm Samuel Blaney, the owner of seventy-five Hillside Avenue.
All right, so tell us, tell us what's on your mind, please.
Uh, the issue is I'm applying for a variance for three planters on the side of my house that were, would be used to simply add some greenery to the space. Um, with our understanding that, uh, the variance was three, the, the distance to the fence was three feet. It turned out to be four feet. When we inquired about the fencing that I put up there, uh, we had spoken to a gentleman by the name of Tac inquiring whether we needed to do anything specifically for planters and were advised that it probably wasn't necessary.
Was he from the city?
Yes, he was from, yes.
What was his name again, please?
Tac is the only name that I have for him.
All right, go ahead, sir. Sorry.
So we constructed the, the planters, uh, only to find out that, uh, they were six inches too close to the property line. And, uh, that's where we stand today.
All right, so they're already, they're already there, okay.
Yeah, they're already there. An error was made. I'll admit to the error. Um, it's a, it's really an issue of, uh, the variance application predicated upon the hardship of the saltwater intrusion to my property. Uh, we've owned the property approximately two years. Uh, anything that we plant there is killed by the saltwater intrusion. So I thought that by adding some, um, planter boxes that would drain because there's no, there's no base in them, that that would allow me to plant something alongside of the house to animal green space to the property, uh, and, uh, that's, that's exactly where we stand.
All right. All right, so we're only looking for six inches here, so it's kind of a mistake. So.
It, it was a mistake in, you know, in trying to get them all squared up, you know, and straight looking. That's, that's, that's where we are.
Okay. Do we have, do we have anyone else speaking on this in favor? No? No one else speaking in favor? Anyone here opposed? Any questions for this gentleman?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Soda.
Uh, are these portable planters or are they built in place?
No, they're built in place. Yeah, they're built in place because of the significant.
It's not something you can just slide, it's not something you can just slide?
No, definitely not, because the, they're, this is probably the lowest property on Hillside Avenue and we get a significant amount of of saltwater intrusion during heavy storms that basically washes out my gravel. So I was just trying to build these plants.
Grass, everything, the saltwater kills everything as soon as it touches.
Exactly. I, I, I had plants there, they were immediately killed. So that's why I thought I needed something to surround them so they wouldn't be killed.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we have, um, no one else speaking in favor and we have no one in opposition. So if there are no further questions, no further questions? All right, this hearing is closed. Okay, this is, uh, pretty simple. We're only looking for six inches here. Mistake has been made along the line here. Pretty simple compared to some of the stuff, huh? So.
Well, it was.
Whatever your thoughts might be.
It was educational tonight and I appreciate the information.
I close this hearing.
Right thing.
I'm sorry, we can't take any more comments from you because I closed the hearing. So, all right, so we need a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion approved.
All right, who's doing that? Eitan or?
Eitan, yeah.
Okay. We need a second. Okay. We have motion to approve. We have a motion to, go ahead, Eitan, what do you want to say?
The basis, the basis is the saltwater intrusion.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti.
With the motion.
Mister Hirsch.
With the motion.
Mister Dubois.
With the motion.
Mister Soda.
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Okay. Number five.
Item number five, one seventy-four Wolf Harbor Road, M B P one thirteen slash nine oh eight slash two. R A, John Barrera, owner, vary section three point one point four point one. Setback to seven feet where fifteen feet is required to install pool.
Okay, who's speaking on this, please?
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Barrera. I reside at one seven four Wolf Harbor Road in Milford, along here with my wife Marilyn. Uh, reason why we're here today is to discuss the installation of a pool. Uh, if you refer to the drawing that was prepared by our surveyor, you'll see that we have a relatively large parcel of land as the side yard or backyard of the property, but due to the location of the septic tank, the leaching field and the reserve leaching field, there was practically no other place to put in a pool. Uh, to the east of the property, uh, is a heavily wooded area which divides us from our our neighbors, which are north and east of us. And to north of the leaching field, there's another heavily wooded area that's, that divides my property from the neighbors behind us. Uh, the intent is to put in a pool for the family. We moved here to Connecticut just a number of months ago. It's our retirement home. And, uh, we had no reason to believe that they would place a septic tank right in the middle of the property. And with the, again, with the situation of the septic tank, the leaching field and the reserve leaching field, we really have no place else to put a pool in.
Okay.
So we're requesting a variance rather than having it from the fifteen foot mark to get it to the seven foot mark offset so we can get the pool just up against that twenty-five foot sacred circle around the requirements by the Department of Health.
All right, and there's woods to the left of, of the pool and there's, I believe there's a side street there too, correct? There's no other property there.
No, so there's no other.
There's no other property. The heavily wooded areas to the east of our property line as well as to the north of our property line.
Well.
And to the extreme, and to the extreme west is actually a driveway, a shared driveway, which is basically for our neighbors at the back. So we're really, for as, for as large as the parcel is in the back, because of the odd configuration and where the septic system is and the auxiliary components, where, where we have no place else, not, other than knocking down the back of the house and putting the pool closer to the house.
Well, we know of your situation because, uh, most of the commissioners go out and look at the properties. So we, we know what you're up against over there.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, do we have any other question? We have any questions for this gentleman? No questions? Okay, is, is there anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here in favor? Is there anyone here this evening opposed? No further questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. Okay, so comments, uh, again, it's a huge piece of property, but they put a septic system right in the back in the middle of it there. So it is limited. There is woods on the side over there and there's also a street. So it's really not encroaching on anything really. It's a matter of making things legal with the variance that's needed.
And, and the structure itself won't be visible.
I can't let you talk anymore. Sorry, sir. We closed the hearing. So, all right, any other, any other comments from the commissioners?
Make a motion approved.
Okay, okay, we need a second. Need a second? We have a motion to approve and we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. So motion to approve, we have a second?
For those based on the hardship of, uh, where the septic system was.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Mister Dubois.
With the motion.
Mister Hirsch.
With the motion.
Mister Soda.
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti.
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved.
Item number six, one eighty-five Kings Highway, M B P fifty-nine slash seven ninety-five slash six. R seven point five, Patty and Alan Mazarek, owners vary three point one point four point one. Side yard setback to three point six feet where five feet required.
Okay, one eighty-five Kings High, who's speaking on this, please?
Uh, yes, my name is Wayne Garrick. I'm an architect in New Haven.
All right.
My office is located at two ninety-one Whitney Avenue. Uh, I'm representing Mr. and Mrs. Mazarek this evening in regards to a small extension to the front of their garage. And we're requesting a variance to allow three point six feet where five feet is required. Obviously, we're requesting a reduction of one point four feet. Actually, you can see on the north side of the house, there, it's very close to the existing property line at one eighty-one Kings Highway. And there is a variance that exists for that side of the house from the previous owner where three point eight feet. But, uh, the property line, as one can see, actually begins to taper as it approaches the street. And, uh, therefore this variance is requested slightly narrower from, to three point six feet versus three point eight feet. The purpose of the garage extension, um, has to do with, uh, Mrs. Mazarek's health and her ability to access the house. We, unfortunately, uh, Mrs. Mazarek has suffered for almost thirty years with Crohn's disease and as it's progressed, she often had many flare ups and, uh, severe arthritic uh, spells and therefore, uh, requested my office. I had designed the original addition and renovations to this house about six or seven years ago before this condition of hers became more severe. And we are proposing to add an elevator to the front of the house. The first floor of the house is actually one half level above the garage level. And then there are two more stories to the existing residence. Uh, this elevator location, where it says proposed elevator on the site plan there, is incredibly convenient because when it would exit at the first, existing first floor, it exits into a powder room, uh, I'm sorry, a pantry. Uh, where it exits at the second floor, it exits into an existing laundry room and where it exits at the third floor, it will exit into a corridor that connects to an existing study. The reason for the five foot extension to the front is to provide accessibility uh, from the garage to the elevator without having to, um, encounter the elements, whether it be rain or snow, uh, in the, during the course of the year. Uh, if you look at the floor plan, uh, for the ground level, I don't know if Joe can bring up the floor plan or not, but, um, the idea is that by this five foot extension, which is only one story, by the way, uh, versus the existing portion of the house, which is two and a half stories where the original variance was granted. Um, this one story extension, uh, allows them or Mrs. Mazarek to pull into the garage, exit her, exit a car and gain access, like I said, to the elevator without, um, encountering the elements. This is, this is about the most convenient and, and, um, easiest way to add an elevator to the house. And, um, in all other respects, we comply. You can see in the upper right-hand corner here, uh, this, this is the line of the existing garage right here. We would take the exact same garage door and extend the exact wall forward. We're not widening the garage at all, but by, and this is the line of the existing front of the house here. You can see by pulling our car into the garage, you'll be able to get into the elevator at, go up one half level and be able to exit into this existing pantry here. We do have the luxury of being able to expand the pantry slightly as well, but that's not germane to this, uh, discussion. Because the new elevator tower, which is this form right here, uh, complies with all the setbacks in terms of front side and setbacks. Our only concern is the distance from this five foot extension, which allows access to the elevator and its relationship to the property line to the north or to the right on this drawing. That's, um, kind of as simple as that. Uh, nothing more, nothing less. It's really to provide someone who has a disability and, uh, needs access to, uh, her future elevator, which we, uh, anticipate constructing hopefully in the fall. Uh, also I submitted. Also, I submitted earlier, last week, or yesterday, my apologies, to Stephen and Meg, a letter from the neighbor to the side at 181 Kings Highway, supporting this application. I am the, just to clarify things, I have, you, I assume, all received a complete package from our office. I'm acting as their agent. The owners have signed the application and to allowing me to act as their agent. And we think that this minimal request of 1.4 feet will serve Mrs. Mazarek very, very well and provide her with many years of enjoyment at their home by the water. I welcome any questions.
Well, pretty much the elevators, you're extending the front of the garage, the elevator's going to be inside the garage. So when the construction is done, you won't even be able to know that. Anything was really going to the house, okay?
Yes.
Do you know if they ever posted a placard out there? Because I didn't see one. So do you know if most of the neighbors were all notified?
I do know. Yes, all the neighbor, all 53 butters were notified, I assure you of that.
All right, all right, we'll take your word for it, okay?
Yes.
All right, any other questions from this gentleman? Is there anyone else here speaking in favor? Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? No one's opposed, okay. All right, this hearing is closed. Okay, board members? If it's something that's needed, it's not going to really affect anything else, you know, by, once it's done, you probably even won't even know it's there. It's something that's needed.
And it's staying in line with the existing.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a second. All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, it's approved.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. All right, so we have one more. Mr. Hatfield's sitting there waiting all night, listening to all of this. So he's up next. Ms. Ferranti?
Item number seven, 35 Fenway North, M B P 43 slash 433 slash seven, R 7.5, Jeff Hatfield owner, vary 4.1.4 side yard setback to 13.6 feet where 21 feet required to construct rear deck.
Okay, Mr. Hatfield, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Peter Crabtree.
Okay, I knew, okay, knew we recognized your face, but it says Jeffrey Hatfield. Go ahead, sir.
Jim too. My name is Peter Crabtree. I live at 64 Stanley Street, New Haven, Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of Jeffrey Hatfield. He's the contractor of record here. To start things off, I did give you a synopsis of what I'm going to say tonight, but there's a series of pictures. And I'll just start with my, I'll just read my presentation here. Mr. Hatfield is doing business as Artisan House Restoration LLC, and he's the owner of record. Home itself is actually built in 1929. So as everybody knows, it's a, it's a pre-zoning house. It's a 5,358 square foot lot. So even though it's an R 7.5 zone, it's considered a non-conforming lot. The structure now is over 90 years of age. It was in need of major renovation rehabilitation. Well, it could have been sold directly to a live-in owner, would have been faced with attempting to live in and survive while performing extensive reconstructive improvements. It's a case of, yeah, it could be done, but it's going to drag on and on and on. Mr. Hatfield has recited the entire home. He's installed the windows. They rebuilt the front porch. They put in, rebuilt the side landing. They rebuilt the front porch. They put on exterior new siding. The air conditioning, heating system is now combined. Won't be any window units outside. So it's been thoroughly modernized. House was gutted at the new sheet rock, new insulation. So if this were in a flood zone, it would be considered a substantial improvement. But of course, it's not enough, that's not an issue here. During the building permit review process, discovered that the 12-by-16 rear deck under construction did not comply with the 21-foot setback, which is required by section 414. Rear setback, as determined by survey, is actually 13.6. And accordingly, we stopped all the construction. Rear yard boundary fence erected by a former owner did provide the necessary setback of 21 feet. Reality is that by confirming the survey from Mr. Kodos Bode, which you have before you, a boundary fence which was used as a layman's reference point is actually six feet beyond the property line, directly aligning with the center line of a 12-foot wide right-of-way which runs between the budding backyards of eight lots, four on Fenway North and four on Fenway South. This mystery right-of-way is 360 feet long, excuse me, varies in width from 12 feet to 24 feet behind Fenway North. And behind this particular house, it's only 12 feet wide. I purposely used in my text here, the word mystery because of what is the original purchase, the original purpose. If it was to provide a rear access for all these homes so they could get into rear garages without having to have curb cuts on their respective streets, that's no longer possible because in reality, the neighbors themselves have now usurped the right-of-way. There are fences that run perpendicular to the alignment. There are fences that run along the alignment. And I even have one picture, it's photo number four, where we actually have a neighborhood, a neighbor's accessory building that actually encroaches into the into the right-of-way. And you can see it with a little red flag there, and that's on photo number four. So if it was the intent to have this right-of-way function as right-of-way, as a driveway access for all these four parcels, it's completely failed because the neighbors have usurped it and they're using it for themselves.
And the road is gone.
And of course, that it's never been paved. And I did check with the contractor. They did a contact call before you dig. There's no utilities back there. There's no above-ground utilities back there. All the water lines feed to the respective streets. There's no gas line that goes through there. So, and it doesn't appear to have any drainage function. There's, it doesn't have like a a natural swale or anything. And again, just want to point out that it's blocked by stockade fences. It's blocked by parallel chain link fences. Everybody's pretty much taken it over by themselves. Again, the question is, you know, why are we here before you? You know, what, what's the hardship? And what I want to, what I want to express is, if you look, first of all, the deck itself is completely invisible from the street. It doesn't affect the character of the neighborhood. And it's not a two-story deck. It's about four to five feet off the ground. And the application's not being made unaddressed. It's not like we got caught doing something. We stopped when we found out there was a problem. And the reality is, while we don't have the land, when you count the right-of-way, there, we do have more than the required setback. Unfortunately, we, in this case, we don't own it. But our hardship is that this right-of-way doesn't affect all the houses in the neighborhood. It isn't albatross for this particular property and, and seven others on the street. But it doesn't affect the whole neighborhood. And one last thing I'd like to close with is if we deny the application, we'll have to cut the deck back, but we'll have to go back to four feet. And at four feet, well, you can get a chair out there. You really can't. Tables and chairs, that's not going to work. Put a grill out there, that's not really going to work. And of course, somebody might say, well, you know, why don't you eliminate the deck? And you can just put a patio out in the back and we can get rid of this problem. Reality is, if you look at the pictures, the photos number two and three, you'll see that there's a hatchway door there and also there's a window there already. So it doesn't really make sense to say, okay, we're going to go out and have a couple of beers or whatever we're going to do on our patio, but we've got to go down cellar, we'll walk out the hatchway door, and then we're on the deck. That's not really the best solution. So I think that we really do have a practical difficulty here. And I think to sum it up, given the major renovations that were made to the home, that it's certainly deserving to get a usable deck. If you have any further questions, I'd be glad to take.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone have a question right now?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Hirsch.
I'm not understanding why there can't be a patio there.
You could have a patio there, but you can't, if you look at the, if you look at photos two and three, you have to put them together, you'll see where the, the first floor is. The first floor doors are about five feet above grade. So you'd have to walk down a set of stairs. Then you've got the patio, I'm sorry, you've got that hatchway that's there. And it, you know, it just, it's, it would be nicer if they have the.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is you can do a patio there, but you just, you'd rather have a deck?
Then the deck is, is, is more usable than an A-grade patio. I mean, we could do a patio unlimited. I mean, we're not close to the coverage. It's on the map there. I think 33%. We can have 60%. We could cover the whole, we can't cover the whole backyard. But, you know, in the scheme of things, it's only 12-by-16. We're not really, you know, putting the coverage limit by any means.
All right, so, so really, the bottom line is, we built a deck. We weren't sure where the property line is back there because you have a strip back there that no one really owns. So that's what caused the confusion. So is there, is there anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
Joe, what also caused, caused the confusion was the fence was six foot off the property line. So they thought they had the land there when they built it.
Yes, they did, so.
They did.
There's a strip. How wide is the strip through there?
Behind this house, it's 12 feet, but it widens out. If you look at sheet number two.
Well, if it was big, it was big enough to have a road back there. You said to have cars go through there or something years ago.
Possibly, yeah, but it's, it's just impossible. With that shed, and you can see it on the, you can see it on the survey there. The expression, you can't get there from here anymore.
All right, so somebody already put a shed out there too?
Yes.
In a property that wasn't theirs, so, all right.
Joe, can we see the photos that Mr. Crabtree is referencing? I, I don't have them in my packet.
Well, I can show you. Is there, let's see here if we can show that. Let's see if you can, it doesn't, it's hard to see here on the, let's see.
Were there photos of the back of the house showing the window and the Bilco?
On photo number two and photo number.
There were. Yeah, there are some photos.
Yes, there's, there are photos there.
Where they have those to put up?
Where the Bilco door comes out next to where the patio is.
It's numbers two and three. And it did submit a photo for number one.
The actual pictures were on the link. There you go. They were on the link that was set with the letter. That's, that's the way, you know. Unfortunately, with the Zoom meeting, we have to, we have to go through things ahead of time and we have to click on all the links and look at the pictures.
I think that was the only link I must have missed.
Yeah.
Okay, this is the left side. You have to link those two photos, two and three together. Or like Siamese twins, because unfortunately, because of.
Oh, so there's a basement window there.
We couldn't, we couldn't get it on one picture. But as I say, it's literally invisible back there. As far as we know, there's, there's no hostility from the neighbors or anything. And we, when we can, to repeat myself, we just think, given the major improvement to a 90-year-old home, I'm not really asking to get a deck out of the.
Yeah, you got a deck there and you have a slider and all, and it, and again, it's a, it's a mistake on where the property.
Jeremy, you also have that basement window. You really couldn't put a set of stairs there down to the patio anyway.
Right, right, so. All right, any, anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone here speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Anyone opposed? So we have some other people out there, but they're not opposed, so. Any other questions? For Mr. Crabtree? No? Okay. This hearing is closed. Okay. I don't, I don't have any problem with this. It's, we have a buffer in the back there. Nobody, maybe it's 15 feet wide, maybe it's 20. Nobody seems to know where it is. We don't, so we didn't have a real marking place as to where to start from. So the deck cannot be made any smaller. The deck's already there. I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and we have a second on the motion. Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With motion.
Mr. Hirsch?
Against the motion.
I'm with the motion, it passes. Okay. All right, thank you for your patience this evening, board members and everyone that's still, that's still here, so. New business? Do we have any new business?
I, I do.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to.
Sure.
Mention it. I didn't have time to go back and check other agendas, but I noticed this month, you know, we had a lot of issues. And three of the applications, you know, they submitted their cover sheets. And when it asks for hardship, they just left it blank. And we signed it and we accepted it and we approved it. So.
Okay, that's a good catch.
If the purpose of this board is to assess hardship against the zoning regulations, then shouldn't we not accept these applications unless they're complete with hardship?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Harris?
If somebody hands in an application, we have to accept it. If the applicants choose to leave certain information blank, that's for the board to consider. So if someone doesn't fill in the hardship, that's for the board to consider and question the app.
So, so as your procedure, you should ask these people and if they don't want to, they don't want to fill it in? It's something for us to think about before we move forward with the application. It's just like, where's your placard? I mean, I, you know, we had one tonight that didn't have a placard and you know, we don't want to really delay things on people and they had all good reasons. But we can not even have a hearing if we don't have the placard, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
This is Joe Griffith speaking.
Yes.
Under the governor's executive order, the requirement for placards has been suspended. And so what we at D P L U have been doing is making sure that within the specified timeframe of the governor's executive order, we are posting notices on the city's websites of specifically public hearings, such as all of these. So that's falling under the executive order, the requirement to not post a placard.
Yeah, but it's, thank you. Even, we do have that stipulation, of course, right now, but it does make it difficult for people because they're not always checking the Milford website and they're not aware of what's going on. So I don't know if we can email them some kind of placard, some kind of statement as to what they're doing. I mean, if, if it was emailed to them, they can make a copy of it and have something out there to make it where the people in the neighborhood, that in fact, something is happening, so. Anyway. Okay, no other new business, old business? Any staff update?
No.
We have acceptance of the minutes from our June 9th meeting. Meg sent them out. We all read them. We're all making a motion to approve, please. Motion to approve. Motion to approve? The minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Are we looking for applications next month, Mr. Harris?
Unknown, it's usually, it's usually too early to tell.
Because we really got hit with a lot tonight.
A lot of people lined their applications in at the last minute.
We have any lined up yet? No?
There, there are two that have been sort of on the fence for months now, and of course, there's the, uh, the one that was, that was postponed. But yeah, they are coming in last minute, much more than in the past.
We had, we've certainly had a lot tonight, and, uh, you know, we have some that really, really take up a lot of time, and it's like, uh, I hesitate to intervene sometime because, you know, we, they start going off on something that doesn't pertain exactly to what we should be talking about. But, uh, anyway, took up a lot of time, so. So, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Anyway, a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned, okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Good evening.
Have a good evening.